Call the committee of the council to hold to order. We're going to receive a presentation tonight on a host community and pilot agreement with Ares. And we have Mark Lyons and Jack Bailey to give us that presentation. And we've all, I know the council is three at a time, received a very good presentation for this group. I think the original referral for a lease was approved nine, nine to nothing. I think this is a fantastic repurpose of the city landfill. It's going to bridge the gap on much needed revenue that we lost with the closing of the landfill. And you know, I've said it before, I, I think the administration, the mayor, the chief of staff and the DPW have all done a great job thinking outside the box and bringing, bringing something to Taunton that will help bridge that gap. And it's much needed. All right, Mark, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be before the council again. I, I know most of you are familiar with the project, if not all of you. I'd just like to recap the basics of the project for you then. Present the financial benefits we've offered the city. And then of course, I'd like to open it up to any questions the council may have. We are Ares Clean Technologies. We're based in Nashville, Tennessee. We've been in business 10 years. We have an operating 50 ton per day gasification facility in Lebanon, Tennessee, that gasifies wood waste and biosolids. And we have a 430 ton per day biosolids only gasification facility under construction in Linden, New Jersey. And that facility should be going into commercial operations. It's very similar to facility, to facility to the one we'll be, we hope to build and operate in Taunton. Has a lot of environmental advantages. We're going to be accepting biosolids from the city and surrounding Massachusetts communities. It's going to reduce the biosolids by 95%. It'll be environmentally sustainable. It'll be carbon neutral, no odors. It will have no impact on the landfill and it'll offer substantial economic and other benefits to the city. And we're going to produce a valuable product from the biosolids called biochar, which we will sell into the construction industry. It's going to be a 470 ton per day throughput facility. We're going to have three 235 ton per day biosolids dryers. We'll typically operate two of them at any given time. And we'll have a third dryer in reserve for when we need to take a dryer down for maintenance. There may be occasions when biosolids volumes are up in the spring where we would operate all three dryers. But, but right now the plan is to operate two and keep one in reserve. We're going to produce a class A type one biosolids. And that'll be the gasifier feedstock of fuel. The gasifier will be able to process about 100 to 105 tons per day of dried biosolids. And we'll be producing 25 tons per day of biochar, which as I said, we will sell into the construction industry. The gasifier will produce heat, which we will use to power the dryers. We'll start the dryers up initially with natural gas. But once the gasifier reaches operating temperature, we'll use that syn gas produced by the gasifier to power the dryers. We're going to have state of the art air quality control equipment and state of the art noise and odor control systems. So the facility will have no impact on the environment or public health. Again, this is a process flow diagram that shows the basic components of the gasification facility. The biosolids will be delivered in totally enclosed watertight trucks. They'll be unloaded in a totally enclosed building, which will be under negative air pressure so no odors can escape. The biosolids will be unloaded into storage bins. We'll then dry them, gasify them. The syn gas will be used in a thermal oxidizer, produce heat, which will then be used to power the dryers. And we'll be removing about 25 tons per day of biochar to the construction market. Again, this is the gasifier. It's operated under starved air conditions. There's not enough oxygen in the system to sustain a flame. It'll operate at about 1250 degrees Fahrenheit. We're going to take the chemical energy in the biosolids and convert it into thermal energy that again will be used to power the dryers. There's no potential for fire or explosions because there's no combustion. And as I said, the process does not require any supplemental energy other than during startup. This is the layout of the facility on the landfill site. We're going to be using the southeast corner of the landfill to build the facility. It was a challenging site, but our engineers are going to be able to make it work. And it'll be, it'll be a very efficient use of the undeveloped portion of the landfill. We've had a artist rendering of the facility prepared. And you can see this is the, this is a rendering of the facility, a bird's eye view. Again, this is the north, excuse me, the southwest corner of the landfill. Will be tucked down there by East Britannia Street and the Taunton Rifle and Gun Club. And you can see the landfill in the background. This is another aerial view that shows the, the view of the facility from above, the landfill behind it, the wetlands, and then the Taunton Rifle and Gun Club to the east. And that's another view of the facility. And you can see the landfill in the background. The building to the left is the biosolids, totally enclosed biosolids receiving building. So again, some of the environmental protection features we're going to design into the project. We'll have a state of the art odor control design. The biosolids will be unloaded in a totally enclosed building under negative air pressure. The thermal oxidizer will destroy all of the volatile organic compounds and any odors. The biosolids delivery vehicles will be watertight and covered. We won't accept any liquid biosolids. We're going to have a state of the art air quality control system. And this project will generate much less traffic than the historical landfill traffic. We're expecting about 20 trucks per day to both biosolids delivery vehicles, biochar removal vehicles and employee traffic. There'll be no land disposal on the site whatsoever, no environmental impact on the landfill. There'll be no water quality impacts. And we're going to have a state of the art noise reduction system that will meet very strict mass DEP noise level standards at the property boundary. So these are some of the major project milestones. Some have already been completed. As the council knows, we signed a site option agreement with the city in December. We'll be executing a biosolids supply agreement with a major biosolids management company sometime this month. We also hope to sign the host community agreement with the city this month. The MEPA approval process is underway. That's going to take about nine to 12 months. We filed our environmental notification form with the MEPA office in December. And the, the review process is now underway. The mass DEP state environmental regulatory permitting process will be separate. That'll take about six to nine months. We hope to have all our permits in hand next year, first quarter. Then we will, we will go to financial close and finance the project hopefully in the second quarter. Construction will begin late second quarter, early third quarter of next year. And then we hope to go into commercial operations early to mid 2023. So these are some of the benefits we are going to be providing to the city. We will make an upfront payment of $750,000. We'll also be making an upfront sewer infiltration and inflow reduction payment to the city of half a million dollars. We're going to pay an annual lease payment of $100,000 that'll escalate every year. We're going to share our gross annual tip fee revenues with the city at current prices at the revenue share percentage of 3.9%. We believe that's worth an estimated $460,000 per year to the city, and that should increase every year. We're also going to offer the city, most favored nation, biosolids disposal pricing. And we expect that'll save the city at least $300,000 per year compared to market pricing for biosolids disposal. We're also going to relocate the landfill residential recycling drop off area to another part of the landfill at no cost to the city. And as I've said, this is going to be a very productive use of a very difficult to develop site. This will provide a safe and sustainable long-term biosolids solution to Taunton. We're going to create about 30 permanent well-paying jobs. And most of our purchases for the facility will be from local businesses. I apologize for the busyness of this slide, but what we've done is we've compared the host community benefits we've offered the city to what the revenue that the city would receive from charging local personal property taxes. The column to the left, under second column from the left, that's the upfront payments we're going to be making to the city. You can see that we're going to, we're going to make an upfront payment. We're going to make the upfront, we're going to make a lease payment at project close for the first year. And then the sewer infiltration and inflow payment we're going to make to the city. So that's a total upfront payment of 1.35 million. And then over the 20-year life of the project, we're going to be making the host community fee payments and the site lease payments. So what we've done is a net present value analysis, which is a conventional way of analyzing a flow of revenue payments for a project that have both upfront payments and payments over time. So the net present value of what we've offered the city under our host community benefits agreement, using a discount rate of 8.5%, is worth about $10.6 million to the city in today's dollars. And but if we, if we don't sign the host community benefits agreement and the city simply charges personal property tax on the value of the building and the equipment, you can see the net present value in today's dollars is only worth about $7 million. So clearly the host community benefits agreement is far superior to charging local personal property tax to the, on the project. And I've also shown you another slide that compares the host community financial benefits we're, we've offered the city to the local personal property tax that the city would receive if we get a manufacturing exemption. And if we get that exemption as granted by the State Department of Revenue, then the city would only be able to tax the building, the value of the building. And you can see under that scenario, the, the value of the local personal property tax under the manufacturing exemption would only be worth about $2.85 million in today's dollars. So we think the host community benefits we've offered the city are very favorable and we, we hope that we can move forward under that agreement. And I'd just like to close with what we're doing right now. Permitting's underway. As we said, we've executed the site option agreement with the city. The MEPA process is underway. We filed our environmental notification form with MEPA. We're currently conducting a noise study, air quality modeling and a traffic study. There'll be ample opportunity for public outreach and public comments on the project. And then we will be writing a final environmental impact report that'll be approved by the MEPA office and the mass DEP will have input to that report. And that report will identify any potential environmental impacts along with the mitigation measures we're going to take to mitigate or eliminate them. And once the MEPA process is complete, we'll obtain air, water and solid waste facility permits from the DEP. We'll also need to get a local site plan approval and a building permit from the city. And I'd like to close by saying we're really excited to be in Taunton. We're excited about the project and we're committed to being a good long-term neighbor in the city. And with that, I'd like to close, say thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mark. If you don't mind, if you could stop sharing your screen, please?
Of course.
I thank you again for that presentation. I do, I do take comfort in knowing you have quite an extensive MEPA and DEP approval process ahead of you that I think will thoroughly vet all environmental concerns or considerations. So I'm glad you, you talked about the extensive permitting process you still have in front of you. So I will go with Councilor Clary, Councilor McCall, Councilor Duarte. Councilor Clary, you're up first.
Up first, no good first. Question is, New Jersey operation, when do you expect that to be operational?
This summer.
So is it a possibility that we could visit?
Of course.
Somebody, a representative of the group could visit the New Jersey site? I'm not sure where in New Jersey, but it might be.
It's in Linden. It's in north, northeastern New Jersey. And yes, anyone from the city, from the council would be more than welcome to visit.
I'll figure out to the council president, maybe we could put together a committee because it's not that far. Second point is, at the end of your process, do you produce any sludge or residue? That you have to dispose of?
We produce a biochar, which is a beneficial product, and we're going to sell that into the construction market.
But you have no waste that you have to get rid of at the end?
There may, there's some spent sorbin, which is essentially lime. We'll either dispose of that or we will try to recycle that as well.
I was just curious. And any, dealing with gasification stuff, any potential for explosions, explosions?
No, because the gasifier runs under starved air conditions. The conditions cannot support a flame. So no, there's no potential for fire or explosion.
All right, I'm just curious. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Clary. Councilor McCall.
I thought the presentation was excellent. I liked everything about the program. And as you mentioned, Councilor Quaid, is that the mayor and the administration has been working very hard on this project and I like everything about it. I, the presentation, I was wondering if you could have that, make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to have that put onto the website so we can, other people can review that also.
Any second?
I second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd also like to thank Mark Lyons and Jack Bailey for the presentation. I know we got together earlier to look at this and I like everything about it. So I wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Councilor McCall. Councilor Duarte.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this afternoon, we received a letter from the Conservation Law Foundation with comments about the project, which I forwarded to the clerk for her to read into the record.
I'll say. The letter is addressed to the Honorable Shana O'Connell, Mayor of the City of Taunton and the City Council of the City of Taunton. Dear Mayor O'Connell and members of the City Council, Conservation Law Foundation would like to take this opportunity to raise our serious concerns about and opposition to Ares Taunton LLC's proposed sewer sludge incinerator. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this testimony. Conservation Law Foundation is a nonprofit, member-supported, regional environmental organization working to conserve natural resources, protect public health and promote thriving communities for all in the New England region. CLF has a long history of advocating for clean air and clean water and environmental justice by working to end the unfair environmental burdens imposed on low-income and communities of color. We also bring enforcement actions and pursue remedies in court such as our historic court case to clean up Boston Harbor or our more recent work to ensure enforcement of the Global Warming Solution Act. Since establishing the Zero Waste Project in January of 2017, CLF has vigorously opposed dangerous waste facilities like landfills and incinerators in the region's agencies and courts and supported zero waste programs that promote the reduction of waste, reuse, recycling and composting. The council has been asked by Ares to approve a host community benefits and pilot agreement in case Ares is able to obtain financing and the necessary permits to build its sewage incinerator and processing facility in Taunton. CLF recommends that the city not enter into an agreement with Ares. At the very least, the city should first require Ares to submit significantly more information about the proposed facility. And the city should consult with independent experts about the dangers to public health that this high heat facility would pose. Ares just began its permitting process by submitting an environmental notification form to the Office of the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. It will be required to file more reports and permit applications with detailed information about the proposed incinerator. The city should at least delay any decisions until it is able to review those documents. Given what little information we have about this particular proposed incinerator, I will restrict our comments to what we do know about all sewage sludge and all gasification facilities. Sewer sludge is toxic. Sewer sludge is all the solid material left over from wastewater treatment. All the waste sent to the sewers from industrial and commercial drains, hospitals, toilets and road runoff ends up in, ends up at wastewater treatment plants. Whatever toxics, hazardous materials and other pollutants that happen to be removed from the water in the process of wastewater treatment and that are then concentrated in the sludge remain in the sludge. Nothing in the processing of sewage sludge treats, detoxifies sludge. Sewer sludge is regulated for some heavy metals, but hundreds of known toxic chemicals in sludge are not regulated. The EPA in its 2009 targeted national sewage sludge survey concluded that all sewage sludge contains toxic and hazardous materials. These include flame retardants, antimicrobials and surfactants, all of which can cause harm to wildlife and humans. PFAS is also found in sludge. In fact, perfluorinated alkyl substances is a very dangerous chemical and firefight a foam and many other products and known to have serious adverse human health effects. Was desated not to break down in high heat. While Ares talks this incinerator as a PFAS solution, there is no evidence in the materials that this gasification incinerator would destroy PFAS. What is gasification? When mass burn incineration burns waste in oxygen-rich environments, gasification and pyrolysis incinerators have limited oxygen, heating waste to temperatures as high as 2,800 degrees Fahrenheit. With limited oxygen and high heat, these facilities generate synthetic gases and oils along with ash, char and air pollution. They are dangerous to our health and to our environment. Gasification is polluting and bad for the climate. Contrary to claims made by gasification supporters, these are not clean technologies. The air emissions from these facilities are similar, similar to conventional incinerators based through a number of cancer-causing compounds described as the most toxic chemicals known to humankind. Moreover, the ash byproduct of these processes may be contaminated with dioxins, PFAS, mercury and other heavy metals, all of which leaches into our groundwater rivers and lakes. But the pollution doesn't end there. The synthetic fuel produced at gasification facilities is later burned to generate energy. Just like with any other oil or gas, this burning creates climate damaging emissions plus heavy metals and other toxics. Gasification is not a PFAS solution. There is no evidence that gasification destroys PFAS. Staff from CLF have been contacted by engineers from multiple gasification and pyrolysis incinerator companies over the last year in hopes of securing our support for their technologies. Each of them presented their technology as a PFAS solution, just as Ares does. We asked them if the incinerators they propose or were running destroyed PFAS. None of them had any evidence that they did, nor had tested whether it did in a lab or in the field. Furthermore, none of them could point to any evidence that any incinerators destroyed PFAS. We have also met repeatedly with agency officials investigating whether they should begin burning PFAS materials at their state's incinerators. The agency officials also had no evidence it was safe to burn materials containing PFAS and were concerned high heat might break PFAS chemicals into more dangerous chemicals. Unless the council has independently confirmed evidence that this gasification incinerator would destroy PFAS, this proposal should not go forward. I know of no such evidence at this time. What would we do with sewage sludge? Sewer sludge should be processed using a low heat technology called anaerobic digestion. Working like a stomach, this would generate methane, which could be burned for energy. Very toxic, as described above. The sludge should then be dried and landfillled to prevent the toxics and heavy metals in it from entering the environment for as long as possible. This is not an ideal solution, but it is a realistic one and much safer than breaking down the sludge and burning its constituents to release pollution into, into the air. Thank you again for this opportunity to comment on the proposed sewer sludge incinerator and processing plant. Please contact us if we can be of assistance or if you have any questions very truly yours. Kristi L. Petchy, Director, Zero Waste Program.
Attorney, thank you for calling for reading that. I'm going to go to you, back to you in a second, Phil. I'm going to, it seems like city solicitor has something to say. That's all right with you?
Thank you, Mr.
Attorney Gay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just received this letter five minutes ago. I want to just put this in perspective, however. We are not permitting anything. The council is not permitting anything. In fact, you're never going to actually permit this use. That's coming from the state. And as Mark Lyons mentioned a few minutes ago, it's months away, months away, through many tests, DEP. This afternoon, I received a four or five page letter, actually more, I'm sorry, 10-page letter from the local DEP office in which they've started their study and making recommendations. That letter is very detailed and has a lot of information in it, and it's 95% positive information. This letter has information. I'm not sure they have the updated technologies in mind, but it's actually irrelevant to tonight. Understand what we're doing. We, the last time they were here, we approved an option to purchase agreement. It's just an option. Tonight, we're asking you to approve a, an agreement on when and if this is permitted and operates, what the benefits to the city of Taunton will be and why there are a better way to do it than taxation. Okay? That's all that's really in front of the council tonight. It's not a permitting process. We're not asking anything to be permitted. Eventually, we'll come back with a lease agreement, which we're still working on. That will be a lease of the land. Again, that's conditioned upon permits being issued by the state environmental agencies. We are not going to permit this facility. We're going to permit it to be used through these documents we're talking about only if they get the permits from the state. So while this letter has some concerns that we need, obviously need to be addressed and will be addressed, it's not something that you could address tonight or we could address or Mr. Lyons or Mr. Bailey can address tonight probably. They haven't even seen the letter. So just put it in perspective, file it, take it under advisement. But it is not relevant to what's in front of the council tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Gay. Colleen, could you check to see if Council Postel's in the waiting room, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Just wait a second till he joins.
Oh dear.
How you doing, Council Postel? So thank you, Attorney Gay. And I would agree that, that's why I mentioned that I know there's an extensive permitting process for, for this project. And you know, and I know it's going to be thorough and very in-depth. So that's why I mentioned that. And Mark Lyons hit on a lot of that, very, very involved permitting that will need to take place. Councilor Duarte, I'll turn the floor back over to you and you're up next, Councilor Sanders.
Thank you. I would just make a motion that that be part of the record.
Second.
Motion made, motion made in second, all in favor?
So through you to the city solicitor, I would ask why this community benefits agreement needs to be approved by the city council at this point in the process prior to all the permitting?
It, it needs to be approved for, for the petitioners to be able to finance going forward. They have to have some indication of how they're going to be able to expend money, what it's going to cost them to run this place in Taunton. And that's why we've got this agreement together. They, I know have spent many thousands of dollars already going forward on this. I'm sure they have investors who want to have some sense of security that if this gets permitted, the figures that we're going to be dealing with down the road will work for them. And these figures, I believe, if you look at them carefully, work very well for the city. So if they work for the developer or the, the builder. So if they work for the developer or the, the builder, the contractor, and the construction and the maintenance and the operation of this facility, that's going to be fine. They need to know that to go forward, Phil. I think that's a business decision. It's a business decision from us, we're making an agreement with them about what we will expect to get if this facility runs. If it doesn't run, we don't get anything, obviously, but if it doesn't get permitted. But if it does, they need to know what their costs are, we need to know what the revenue is. And that's why we're doing it now, so that they can present this to their investors. I know that I wouldn't invest in a project unless I had some idea what the returns and expenses were going to be. And every city will have it. If they decided to go someplace else, they'd be looking at a different set of situation, different facility, different locations, that type of thing. So I think that's why this is being done tonight.
And through you, Mr. Chair, to the city solicitor or anyone else that may be able to answer it, did the city, through the administration, engage any consultant or expert about environmental or public health impacts?
To my knowledge, not as yet. We're relying upon the DEP people to take those steps. That's part of the permitting process. That's certainly something we can consider down the road, depending on how the DEP review is ongoing. From what I saw today, and again, I haven't even got through that letter, it was nine pages, I think it's heading in a very good direction for everybody, and that will be made available to the council. We just got it today.
Thank you. I would just make a few comments. The first being that, obviously, this is a project of significant investment and importance, and so, you know, I would disagree with the point that the concerns that were raised are not relevant to the decision that we're making this evening, because every decision that we make throughout this process is a further endorsement of the proposal by the city council. And I think the, the concerns raised in the letter are very significant, especially to myself as someone who studied public health and has a degree in public health. You know, it's always concerning to hear about potential toxic emissions from any type of facility, but especially when it is this type of material that's being processed. And it was especially concerning to hear the concerns about PFAS specifically, as PFAS is increasingly becoming an avalanche of a problem across the state, in our drinking water, in the earth, and all over our communities. And it's just now being exposed how big of a problem it actually is. And so if there are any concerns regarding PFAS with this facility, then, you know, I think those should be investigated early on rather than continuing to go through a process, waiting for those answers. And in terms of the, of the DEP's involvement, I think most recently with the issues at the Waymouth compressor station, we have seen that the DEP does, does not always act with the citizens' best interests in hand. That facility was widely opposed by almost everyone, residents of Waymouth, residents of the area, all of their state legislators, congressmen, senators, everyone, and still it was permitted by the DEP. And there's extensive scientific research about how harmful those compressor stations can be to the surrounding communities, and regardless, it was permitted by DEP. And since becoming operational has failed three times, and so, you know, we can't always trust DEP, so I think the least that the city could do is do more due diligence to engage some independent consultants about how this will affect the environment and our public health. And the last thing I'll say to that point is that I take the words of the CLF very seriously because they are a public interest organization. So they exist for no other reason than to do what is in the best interest of the general public. And so I, I know wholeheartedly that when I read a letter, or an article, or anything from the CLF, that they are purely looking at it in the interest of what's best for the general public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Duatt. We'll go to Counsel.
Mr. Chair, could I have a point of clarification on that PFAS, if I may? Yeah, Mark, I'd like to just ask you a question. Can you explain the PFAS if it's destroyed by the process?
We believe that the, that PFAS will be destroyed by our process, and any PFAS that remains will be in the biochar, which will be placed into concrete and completely sequestered from the environment. We believe we are the best PFAS solution for biosolids.
Okay, thank you.
No other tech, no other technology of which I'm aware addresses the issue.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you for the clarification.
We're going to go to Counsel Sanders and Counsel Crowder, then Counsel Postel. Counsel Sanders.
President, through you to perhaps the city solicitor.
You're having a bad connection, Counsel Sanders.
I'm doing my best. I got no other, let's see if I can just make this any better.
Stay still.
Stay still, okay.
Yeah. I think when you.
All right, so let me see, through you, Mr. President, to probably the city solicitor, just on some clarification regarding process. Is this one of those kinds of projects? It was, it was some constituent asked me about, about the bidding process. You've come to us with a single entity for this project. I'm wondering if there was any type of a competitive bidding process that we would have had an opportunity to look at other potential candidates for this project.
That's something that we've been discussing amongst ourselves in the law department under the special act of the legislature back in 19, whatever it is.
96.
96, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome, Mr. Gay.
The, the city is not required to do that type of bidding as would be under general laws with respect to the operation, maintenance, and expansion, and overall actions, operations of the sewer treatment facility. This is part of the operation of the sewer treatment facility, it's just a different way of removing from that facility and disposing from that facility's byproduct, which we were, as you may all know, dumping at the landfill for years. Now we're dumping it in Connecticut someplace at an extremely high cost, but it's still going into the environment, and this will not go into the environment, at least as I understand the project. I'm not a civil engineer, and I don't think the corporation, the Conservation Law Foundation is in and of itself isn't civil engineers either, they're a law foundation. So I'm going to defer to those people who have that expertise with respect to the operation. With respect to the bidding process, we've come to the conclusion that we will probably consider putting out requests for a proposal if it gets to that point, but we don't anticipate that that's likely, there are, nobody else is doing this yet. I mean, they have the only two facilities that are functioning in this type of process that I'm aware of. One is under construction, will be opening in New Jersey, as Mr. Lyons said, within the next three or four months. The other one is similar operation, not exactly the same.
Smaller.
It's in where?
It's, it's smaller and it's in Lebanon, Tennessee.
Tennessee. So, I mean, when they, when, when, and again, I just got the letter, so I can't, I don't want to comment too much about the Conservation Law.
With all due respect, I'm just, I'm trying to answer a couple of questions, and certainly Mr. Solicitor, you have other comments to add.
The, the, the idea of bid has been discussed completely, and at this point, we do not believe it is necessary or applicable.
Thank you for the answer to my question. And the other question I wanted to direct to you is about sort of the rest of the process. You've made a point early on of saying, this is just about a financial arrangement should the project go forward, and I'm, I'm curious, what other opportunities will the council have to cast votes that would impact this project? One, number one. And number two, will there be an opportunity for public input? You know, the residents of that area have for a long time been saddled with the consequences of a landfill, and I have to imagine that there might be folks in that neighborhood who might want to at least be heard on the issue of whether or not they want a gasification plant in the neighborhood.
I'll answer the second part first, Counsel Sanders. It's my understanding, although I have not personally participated, there have been meetings ongoing already with neighbors, neighborhood people there, neighborhood groups, business and residential, and that will continue. The public hearing portions of this are going to be extensive through the DEP process, so there'll be a number of opportunities. And I think that it's very reasonable to say that the city, at some point, as those public hearings go through the DEP process, could schedule one of our own, similar, to follow up on those DEP ones, but they will be local, and if not local enough, we can have one here. Did I, did I forget your first question? Now, let me think.
First one is sort of, is which other votes?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. The, the main vote will be the vote on the lease of, the lease of the property. That will come sometime in the next year or so, depending upon when the developer has a satisfaction that they think this permit is actually going to be, going to be granted, and the city is comfortable with the fact that that's going to be granted, then we would need to discuss terms and conditions in more detail of the lease. Excuse me, that would be the point at which the council would have not only their own input, but public input about the whole project, the idea of, of the, of this and the lease put together, because the lease has some financial benefits, too. Not to any extent equal to what's in the, this agreement before you tonight, but there is some financial arrangements in the lease also. But that's the critical point, and, and that one I don't have a date on, but I don't anticipate that right away. That would be sometime in the future.
So the council will have, I guess, one more opportunity to cast a vote on whether or not this project goes forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Solicitor, and through you, President Coit, to the petitioners, just a couple of questions. And I'll start by saying that we absolutely need new technologies that are going to help us with various waste issues, not only here in Taunton, but really around the world. Dumping our stuff in hoes in the ground is problematic on so many levels and certainly not sustainable. However, nothing comes without risk, and I think we have a responsibility if a project is going to come into our community to do our due diligence, to make sure that, that we look at things, you know, the net gain isn't simply financial, there's costs and benefits to, to all projects, and I think the letter from CLF certainly raises some questions that, because I'm not a biowaste expert, I'll need some additional time to digest. And we heard from City Solicitor Gay that we just received moments ago, 10 more pages of information, this from DEP. Just a couple of questions from what little I understand about all this. You had mentioned sort of state-of-the-art noise suppression. Do you have a, can you tell me what the decibel level would be in that neighborhood resulting from the facility, so that there's some kind of state-of-the-art noise suppression?
That's yet to be determined, Counselor, but the, the DEP standards allow for 10, 10 decibels above background, and that's background at the, at the quietest time, which is in the middle of the night. So some of the toughest noise level standards I've ever seen, and we will need to meet those, and, and we're right now doing a noise study to determine what steps we have to take to make sure we meet those noise levels at the property boundary.
Thank you for that, and I, I look forward to hearing some more about, you know, the technology here. As I said when you came before us the first time, you know, I do have some significant concerns. Gasification has been rejected in Massachusetts as simply another form of incineration. When we spoke last, I was pretty clear that one of my worries is that, you know, come some new administration eventually, if the DEP starts to feel differently about whether or not your project is considered incineration, your whole project could be in jeopardy. And I'm, you know, we've, we've gone down this path before, where we've gotten our hopes and our efforts, you know, focused on something that seemed like the perfect solution to all our problems, and it turned out to be not what it seemed to be. And no disrespect to you or to the folks who have been in the past, but, you know, things don't always work out the way we think they're going to. And, you know, I guess I would be, I, I'd be, feel a lot better about this if I had all that information a week ago that we just got moments ago, so I'd have some time to follow up on it. I wonder if you have some response to the letter from CLF? I know you said that you believe your, your project has a new technology that deals with PFAS in a very different way. Is there anything else you'd like to say in response?
Yes, and I, I am at a disadvantage, I haven't seen this, the CLF letter, but I would, I will say that they're completely mistaken. We are not incineration. The U.S. EPA has issued a letter stating that our technology is not incineration, and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has permitted our Linden, New Jersey facility under construction as a gasifier, and they have also concluded that our technology is not incineration. We cannot sustain a flame in our gasifier, therefore, we can't burn the waste, and so we are not incineration. And then I would like to also offer to, I'll meet with the CLF anytime they would like to explain our technology, how our facility in Lebanon, Tennessee works, and has been working successfully for years, and also happy to show them all of the documents that we used to permit our facility in New Jersey. And then I guess finally, I would like to say that the CLF's preferred solution for managing biosolids does nothing to address PFAS. They say anaerobically digest biosolids in a digester and then send it to a landfill. Well, that does nothing to address PFAS. The PFAS is still in the anaerobically digested biosolids, the PFAS goes to a landfill, the PFAS leaches out of the biosolids in the landfill, it winds up in the landfill leachate, the landfill leachate goes to a wastewater treatment plant, and then is discharged to a river, a stream, or a lake, or the ocean. So the CLF's own recommended preferred management method for PFAS in biosolids does nothing to address the issue. And I'll close with that, and I'd be happy to answer any more questions they may have.
Great, just a couple more questions. You said something, you said UCPA. Could you tell me what that means, UCPA? UCPA?
Could you, could you, UCPA?
You said something about.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. We've already provided the letter that the, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency issued about our technology to the council, and we'd be happy to provide it again. The EPA has determined that our technology is not incineration.
And if this project were up and running, what kinds of testing will you be doing in the area just to confirm that, you know, whatever toxins people might be concerned about aren't actually showing up in the air, soil, or groundwater?
Yeah, we will, we'll require our regular chemical testing of all of the biosolids we receive, so that we know what's in the biosolids, and we'll also do regular tests on our air quality. Those haven't been determined yet, that'll be done in the, during the permitting process, but they'll be. they'll be, uh, the, the DEP will require, uh, air quality testing on a regular basis, uh, at our facility. And, and like I said, nothing is being landfilled or, or, um, uh, it's all being, uh, gassified and beneficially used in, in concrete applications.
And will you have some, uh, some reserve funding, mitigation funding? So if, if there were to be, uh, some problem discovered with either air, ground or water contamination, that you would have the resources available to deal with that?
Um, I, that's, that's something we certainly can consider. But I don't see any opportunity for, uh, water contamination again where, where, um, we will be, uh, you know, with the biochar we will produce will be, uh, put into concrete and sequestered from the environment. But yeah, we, uh, we, we, that's certainly something we can talk about. We'll be, as I said, we'll be routinely testing the biosolids we accept, the biochar we manufacture and the, um, the air quality, uh, at the facility.
And, and the reason I ask that, I'm sure in, in the best of circumstances, um, you know, when everything works perfectly well, it works perfectly well, but machines break down and bins leak and accidents happen. And if there were to be some accident in our community, uh, I guess what I would, what I would not want to hear is, uh, gee, that's a big problem and we feel really bad about it. Uh, but we don't really have the cash on hand to do the kinds of things that will put it right again. Uh, so that would be a concern for me.
Okay. There are, there are environmental liability insurance is also available. So maybe that's something we could look at too.
Yeah, that, that might be advisable. Hopefully you'd never have to use it, but I guess that's how insurance works. Uh, thank you. That, that's all my questions and comments.
Thank you, Council Sanders. We're going to go Council Carr, then Council Postel.
Just wanted to, uh, make a comment about, does the city have a consultant? The city has a consultant. It's a state agency. It's called the Department of Environmental Protection. To make a comment that the Environmental Protection Agency found again, uh, went forward and approved a permit when the local people didn't agree to it. And certain politicians didn't agree to it. That was the case. Those people entirely entitled to appeal to court. The fact that the Environmental Protection Agency gave a permit might have been because it wasn't hazardous. But on the other hand, it's true. You know, I really think there are occasions when both private and public consultants are wrong. But in this case, I wonder how many decisions the Environmental Protection Agency made over all these years that were contentious. And sometimes, in fact, they voted against us, if you recall, when we talked about when you purchased that land in the industrial park. And we couldn't get opinion. So that was the opposite. Now, from a practical point of view, I think that the city solicitor, Attorney Gay, had a very good point. The decision tonight is not the final decision. It's nowhere near it. But if you're going to ask a private sector agency to convince its investors to either use some of the cash they have on hand, okay? Or to borrow money in the name of the investors, then I think you have to have some initial agreement, which is, that's all what tonight is about. So if you want to get out of the dugout onto the playing field, whether you do it with this company or not, you're going to have to come up with some financial tentative agreements that if the project is permitted and goes forward, because you have to provide that kind of financial information. You have to agree to that to the company, with the company. If they're going to get and convince people to put a lot of money into it, you have to have those initial agreements because the private sector is not going to invest money without some type of understanding. That's a very practical concern. And from the count of the point of money, of course, of course. The first concern here is safety and quality of life. On the other hand, if we approve something that's very safe and very, uh, good qua, to quality of life, on the, but we gave away the ship, now what would be, people be saying? So yeah, the financial coming back to the city is a matter of concern. Not as important as the quality of life. It's certainly a matter of concern. Oh, by the way, it's very hard to have quality of life without money. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Carr, Council Postel. Yeah, Council Potty be asked to Council Postel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I apologize. I'm trying to get, um, fast tracked to, uh, where we are with things. And, um, uh, again, I, I have briefly saw the email that had just came in that everyone is speaking of. Um, so I'm not going to really, really comment on a lot of that because I haven't really been able to, to review it yet. Um, but again, it seems like, um, a lot of the questions that I'm hearing, a lot of the comments I've, I'm hearing tonight has had the op, has been having the opportunity to have been asked to these, to these folks. Uh, Mr. Lyons is think this is my third time, uh, as many other counselors of, of having you before us or speaking to you about this matter. Um, so there's been opportunity to, uh, to certainly discuss, um, bidding processes and, and I think you've given us a very good, uh, rundown of what the, the, the process would be in terms of the, uh, the, uh, the work there at the site. Um, I just wonder, we, we get these, we get these recommendations, uh, that I'm hearing of. And again, I have not read them thoroughly, uh, pretty much just skimmed over them. Uh, but we get these recommendations, uh, to be added to this or added to that, or these oppositions of this or oppositions of that. And it's certainly very important. And let me just make sure I say this. And, uh, a lot of times people don't hear and things are not reported correctly. Uh, I too am very much in tuned and concerned about the environments and how things impact the future. Uh, but I'm also concerned about how things have impacted, uh, our community, uh, for the last several years, uh, with, with terms of waste management. Um, and so, you know, when we get these recommendations, we get these oppositions, we get things of this nature. It's nice, but what other solutions, other than what I think they've given a couple of bullet points there? What are the solutions are they giving to not just us, but other municipalities around the state to address the concerns of what do we do with waste? Uh, we have all these landfills that are closing. Things are being forced, uh, to close. And it comes at the expense of not to the city, but to the taxpayers of the city for paying the bill to have these things, uh, trucked out or disposed of some other way. Or it just clutters the street and makes it look really unattractive for our community. So what other options, what other ideas, what other solutions are being put forth by organizations, DEP, these other entities to help municipalities here locally to address the problems that we've been plagued with, uh, over the years. And now we have a, a solution. And as I think Counselor Sanders mentioned, uh, uh, what seems to be a fairly decent and fairly reasonable solution. And unfortunately, we don't always have the crystal ball to see what the totality of circumstances will be, uh, further down the road. But, uh, it seems reasonable and I like to consider myself a fairly reasonable person. I certainly do not pretend to be a, a very adverse, uh, environmentalist or a scientist. And Mr. Lyons, when you were speaking a little bit ago, I, I felt a little dumb because I was trying to type in some things of what you were talking about because uh, I had no clue. You were speaking a foreign language to me. But you're in this business, you, you, you know what you're, you're speaking of. You're the professionals. Uh, and again, there needs to be some understanding that there's other, you know, concerns with, with things out there that we need to take into consideration. But that requires some dialogue back and forth, uh, and to be able to plan that, um, for that. But I just, I asked what other solutions have been put forth to help us and other municipalities to guide through this, what other options are available, uh, that aren't going to continue, uh, burdening the, the taxpayers of the city. And we've, we've put forth, uh, what seems to be put forth, or we've had what seems to be put forth, a reliable, reasonable solution. Uh, we obviously have cited, cited that it's going to require some fancy footwork and some navigating, if you will, through, through the state here and the standards that are in place. I don't think anyone is surprised by that or was, uh, not expecting that. But we've put forth a solution and it's the first solution that I know of since I've been on the council in my very short, uh, two terms, uh, to look to address the downfall or the shortcomings of the landfill. And that's not a disparaging remark to anybody or any, or any other, uh, previous administration is that has come before, uh, this administration. But what other options have been, been put forth? Um, and so I think we need to work through the concerns, obviously, that are there. I'm certainly concerned to hear about, I'm certainly interested more, uh, per se to hear of the concerns of our residents locally as well on this matter. But I submit, what other options do we have that's going to be, uh, savings to the taxpayers and not continuously shipping this stuff down to other states and across the country? Um, and just as for other concerns about what the site's going to do, I would argue and maybe even submit that concerns about water, uh, uh, contamination, I would think would be, and again, not an expert here, don't even, didn't even stay at a Holiday Inn last night to pretend that I know what I'm talking about. But I would be surprised to think that this would cause more contaminations to the ground and to the, to water, uh, sources than it would be what we already have there with the landfill where we're putting things into the ground and covering them up, where you have the contamination into the soils uh, and the runoffs of the elevation from that humongous mountain. I, I don't know. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I don't know my butt from a hole in the ground. I don't know what I'm talking about here. But I just feel like there's some concerns that brought up, but I just don't know where the, um, I don't, I don't see the, the connection to them, uh, uh, for some of that. Maybe you can enlighten me. Maybe, maybe we can do this at another time. But just some comments that I wanted to make. And again, I need to get caught up to more of what the, 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 uh, the correspondence was all about. But that was just some of the takeaways. And I may be, again, off the tracks here and off the reservation, uh, with what has already been said or what we're discussing. But that was just my takeaway from the, the feeling of the comments and the, of the room. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Postel, Council Potty.
Just real briefly, because my, my friend in seat, whatever he's sitting in, Jeff's told a lot of my thunder. Um, I, I, I would just want to emphasize what he said as well. My understanding is currently what we were doing when the landfill was open was just burying this in the ground. So I can't see if this was extremely harmful to the environment, any worse solution than that, um, actually. So, um, and I do actually have faith in my brother and sister agencies in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Because if we don't, um, we might as well just go back to living in caves and huts because that's basically what we have to, to rely upon and make these important decisions. So, um, seeing as no other comment, I, I move to, uh, for the committee to, uh, adopt the host community agreement.
Thank you. Roll call. What you made in second and on discussion, Counselor.
I'm sorry, Debbie. I didn't know you didn't speak yet. My apologies, Debbie.
No, well, um, are you all set, Council Potty?
I am. Thank you.
Counselor Carr on discussion. You're on mute. You do that once every night. So we have to get it out of the way.
Every time, at least one, at least one should be.
At least one.
Usually more than one. So yeah, I was being quiet till the end and, um, I, um, I read the letter from the CLF with, um, with interest because it is interesting, but I have a question for, for, um, uh, Mr. Lyons, I guess. And in your process, Mr. Lyons, does it release anything into the air or is it all recaptured and brought, brought back in, into the facility?
Well, um, our process has extensive air quality control equipment. Uh, we have, uh, a thermal oxidizer that destroys VOCs and all volatile organic compounds and, and, and any odors. We have a ceramic filter. We have a selective catalytic reduction system to remove NOx, uh, uh, compounds from the syn gas. Uh, and we have a, uh, a scrubber that, uh, removes, uh, um, hydrogen compounds and sulfur compounds from the gas. So, um, we have, uh, extensive air quality control equipment. It'll be thoroughly permitted by the DEP. Um, and, uh, so, um, we think we'll have no impact on the environment.
Yeah, I just curious. I, we've had, I mean, I can't remember exactly what, but before someone before us that said that everything was captured and brought back in somehow. Um, so, um, I'm a little, uh, the, the presentation that we saw at the beginning, was that sent to us? Because I didn't see that. The presentation that you gave us at the beginning of the, of this.
Well, I provided it to the mayor's office. I don't know if, um, if, uh, uh, it's been provided to the council, but if it hasn't, uh, we certainly can do that.
Okay, because it had most of the finance stuff on it and I have not seen it and I had a lot of questions about that. So, um, I, I would like to see those numbers, um, before I vote on it. Because, uh, David, if I may ask you, this host community benefits and pilot agreement that you're asking us to sign will be the final, um,
I'll leave it open.
The, the, the final financial agreement between the, the company and us?
Yes, well, except for the lease agreement, uh, Counselor Kyle, which will have some rental payments in it. But this will set the parameters for, for, uh, what the financial arrangements would be going forward. Uh, and it's, and in Mr. Lyons's projection, it would be at the 20 years forward. You, you can see the difference between the traditional tax and this. Um, I was under the impression that that had been sent to the councilman, but maybe I'm wrong.
Did anyone else get it on council?
I, I thought it had been, but.
I don't think so. So.
I didn't get it. So I didn't forward it.
I'm sorry.
What'd you say, Colleen?
I did not get it. I, I would have forwarded it.
Yeah, I don't think anybody got it. So, um, because I had a lot of questions about the actual, you know, uh, verbiage in here as far as, you know, well, before I get to that, I'm going to go back to, I was surprised and not that I don't believe what Mr. Lyons says, but I would like some verification from our own assessors about the tax situation on the land, on the equipment, on the building, um, and what our, what our taxing options are. I'd like that from our assessors. I also, um, am surprised that we didn't hear from DPW. I'd like to know that, um, we're, they're, they're talking about a reservation fee for sewer capacity. But, um, I'd like to know what their requirements are for sewer capacity and if we have that sewer capacity. Because the last I knew, we did not have a lot of extra sewer capacity at the, um, sewage treatment plant. And, um, I know we're working on an upgrade and maybe once it's upgraded, we're going to have more. I'm not sure. But I would like somebody from our own DPW to let us know that we have the capacity that required before we sign something that says we're going to give them a sewer capacity reservation. So I'm not sure what that means. That's one of my questions. What is a sewer capacity reservation?
Is that for Mr. Lyons?
Sure.
Or is that for, uh?
Mr. Lyons, uh, David, maybe David.
Or maybe Jack Bailey, perhaps?
Whoever, uh, uh, who wrote the host community agreement? Was it David?
Oh, it was a combination of people, Deb.
All right. Well, then whoever can explain to me what a sewer capacity reservation is?
Who wants to take that one? Anyone? It, it, as I understand it, it's a payment to the city, uh, so that they can help solve their infiltration and inflow problem. It's not a sewer capacity reservation fee. It's a, it's a payment to the city that, uh, the city and the city will use the money to, to, uh, help eliminate infiltration and inflow into the sewer system, which will increase the, uh, the, the city sewer system treatment capacity.
It's something that's required of anybody that's developed anything in the city that.
It's something that's required of anybody that's developed anything in the city that has a discharge of any kind.
I guess, I mean, everyone that builds a new project is required to pay an II fee? Is it the II fee? Or is it you're going to pay a regular sewer bill like everyone else? Yes?
Both.
Both? So that's what I'm trying to figure out. What is this reservation fee? It says you're going to pay $500,000 up, no later than five days after closing, and that the sewer fee shall be credited against the project's future sewer reservation fee capacity payment obligation. What does that all mean?
I think what that means is that Mr. Lyons is correct, that it allows the city to spend the money to do exactly what he said, but it also is going to assist us in the future with the renovations that are ongoing, and hopefully, because we've got two other major contracts we're working on for the sewer treatment facility, to increase the capacity and the flow. So this is money that we would be able to use for both those purposes, and getting it upfront is a big plus to the city rather than having it paid over time. But the capacity, Counselor Carr is correct, you're correct, capacity is going to be addressed with the renovations, and if the renovations go the way that we hope they will go, they'll be done simultaneously with the time this place, this building gets on, this process rather, gets online. But I don't think their discharge is very much, but I'll defer to them. I'm not sure what their discharge is.
My next question was going to be, how much capacity are they required to have?
We need about 75,000 gallons per day of very low strength. We'll be discharging very low strength condensate and cooling tower blowdown. It's not completely clean water, but it's very, it's pretty clean. We're exploring ways to recycle that water, but right now, we don't have a recycling solution.
Okay, and since no one from DPW was here, and I did try to call Mr. Abrew earlier, but he didn't answer, does someone, David, do you have the amount that we currently pay to dump our sludge wherever we take it to? What it costs us per week, per month, whatever it is, the sludge removal?
I need to answer this for him. Jack will answer that.
I mean, you do understand that.
Jack.
Oh, Jack Ham, sorry, Jack Bailey signing off.
So right now.
Oh, I didn't know Jack Ham was here. That's you, Jack. I couldn't tell who was sitting there. Okay.
So right now, the contract with Veolia required them to take care of the sludge at the plant. So for 22 years, it went to the landfill. The city let them dump it there. When the landfill closed, it was on them to find a disposal site for the next three years, and they've been taking it down to Connecticut right now. So there's no additional cost. But just to put this in perspective, I was talking to Brockton the other day, and they used to have an incinerator. The incinerator was forced shut down by EPA. You know, they just, they gave up fighting on the permit. And so they just bid their sludge hauling. They were initially going to do a project with New Bedford and Fall River, and that fell apart. So they just bid a contract, it's 2.4 million a year to haul the sludge to Noggett, Connecticut.
Okay, I would think that Brockton has a whole lot more than Taunton.
A lot more than us, but you're still in the million-plus range for Taunton to haul it there.
Okay, and also, I, I don't know, I just feel that the tipping fee revenue is, the part that says we get 3.9% of such and such, was, on that last, on that report sheet, I was trying to look for it, was 460,000, I think, was the number. Is that what we're going to receive for that tipping fee revenue sharing? Mr. Lyons, I think.
Yeah, that's an estimate, but that's the projected revenue in year one. And then we expect tipping revenues will climb as market prices for bio solids disposal have been climbing for the last 10 years. So we expect that number to start out at around $460,000, in addition to the savings you'll receive on bio solids disposal and the lease payment, and those numbers will increase over time. That's shown in the, one of the slides I presented tonight.
Right, so you also talked about us being, I think you called it getting favored nation charges for the dumping of our own sludge. I think that's what you called it. What exactly is favored nation? Are we paying less than everyone else, a percentage less?
Correct.
Same as? What does that mean?
That's, you'll pay no more than any other customer of the facility and the lowest price.
So because we are hosting a regional facility, are we not going to get any kind of a discount at all on what we pay ourselves?
You will get, you will receive the lowest price, but you're also, remember, getting almost half a million dollars in year one in revenue from the project, as well as the upfront payment we're making and the lease payment.
Yeah, I don't know, because I don't have those figures in front of me, so I'm not sure what they are, but, so I'm a little, I don't know, I'm a little unsensible voting for this because I don't have the figures. I think my personal, I know Dave made a motion, but personally, I'd like to hold this for a week till I can look at the figures for it. Thanks, I think that's it for me.
Is that a motion?
Well, there's already a motion on the floor.
Motion table could take precedence if that was something you're interested in.
Yeah, I just don't feel comfortable without hearing from the assessors about taxation and the DPW about capacity and looking at the figures, so I would make a motion to table for one week.
Second.
Motion made in second to table. All in favor? We'll do it a roll call. We'll do it a roll call. Colleen, roll call table.
Counselor Sanders.
Yes.
Counselor Clary.
Counselor Clary is.
Counselor Duatt.
Yes.
Counselor Crotto.
No.
Counselor Partier.
No.
Counselor McCall.
No.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
Counselor Postel.
No.
Counselor Coy.
No. Motion does not carry. So we have a motion on the floor to approve. Attorney Gay.
I just wanted to, Deb asked a question earlier about taxes and the assessors. One of the things maybe you didn't understand, they're not going to own the land, so there's no real estate tax. That's off the top. That's one of the things, just so you know.
Thank you.
I did know that.
Okay.
Counselor Crotto.
If we want to talk about money, you were told numerous times that when the landfill closed, between loss of income and additional expense, we would be looking at four to five million dollars a year.
Two or three.
All right, now, if we want to talk about money, this is going to generate between reduction in expense and revenue. Two parts, revenue and expense. Our expenses will go down, our revenue will go up. It's new revenue. A million dollars. Now, Brockton entered into an agreement for 2.2 million dollars to get rid of the sludge. Brockton is about twice the size of Taunton. So the estimate to get rid of the sludge for Taunton is about half of that, over a million dollars. That's an expense, not a revenue. Our revenue is going to go up because it's new revenue. Our expenses will go down. Right? Now, as far as the council is concerned, there were three separate meetings with these people. Three counselors at each meeting. The council had the opportunity at those meetings to ask questions. Now, I don't remember if there was printed material distributed at those meetings, but there was no question, there was very specific discussion at those meetings about these numbers, that between a reduction in expense and increased revenue, the city would have a million dollars. Now, Attorney Gay mentioned something about this defraying the cost of sewer and so forth. Please keep in mind that we are in the process of borrowing 60 million dollars to take care of our sewer system. 60 million dollars. We currently have discussions going on with the state government. If we lose those discussions, we will be borrowing another 25. That's 85 million dollars we will be borrowing. I hope not, but at least 60 within the next few years. As Attorney Gay stated, tonight's vote is simply to provide information, financial information, financial initial discussion, okay, to this company so they can go forward and try to get people to invest in this project. I think when you approve, when you approach your investor, okay, with a business opportunity, the first question those investors would ask, what are we going to get out of it? Now, if you can't give them at least some initial discussion that's favorable to them as an investor, I don't think you're going to go anywhere. So if you want to get out of the dugout and onto the playing field, I think there is a need to approve this this evening so we can go forward. We will have the opportunity at subsequent points along the way to say no. In the meantime, I think we need to get going. Either that or look for someone else. You don't want this, look for someone else. Thank you.
Call the vote, Mr. President.
Counselor Crotto.
Call the vote.
Any second.
Perhaps they hands up, Counselor.
Any second on call the vote. No, no, no second. So I'm looking at the time. I hope we be brief. Everyone's had one opportunity to chat, so I'm hoping we can be brief on our second round, because I would like to take this vote soon. Counselor Duatt and then Counselor Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Lyons. Just looping back around on the earlier point of information about the PFAS, does Ares have any data or evidence on its other operations that shows that PFAS has been destroyed by the gasification process?
Well, our facility in Lebanon is a smaller facility, so I don't think the data from that facility would be valid. We will shortly, obviously, have operating data from our Linden, New Jersey facility, but we've got some white papers on temperatures that destroy PFAS, and we're in addition, we're going to be doing some other studies with research organizations, so we can provide you with that information.
That would be appreciated. And I would just note that, you know, it was stated that if the PFAS isn't destroyed, that it would be sequestered in the concrete that's produced at the end of the process. But concrete, you know, similar to Counselor Postel, I was doing some quick Googling, and concrete is a very porous material through which all of that could end up flowing back into the environment. And I'm not trying to get into a debate with Mr. Lyons or anyone else for that matter during this meeting. I am just trying to clearly demonstrate the point that matters of this significance should not, you know, proceed as quickly as possible without being fully vetted by independent consultants or whomever. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Duatt. Counsel Carr.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just very briefly, I will say that in the past, we became a regional facility for the dump, and because we did, we now have nowhere to put our own stuff because we became a regional facility, and we let others in instead of just putting our own stuff there. And just to make note, nobody received that report. So the five counselors who voted to move forward tonight are voting to move forward without any of the financial information. I'm just laying that out there. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll move to the vote. Colleen.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Okay, Counsel Crotto for a third time.
Please, I sat at that meeting with two other counselors, and these people and the city administration told us that this city, between expense cut and revenue new, we would see a million dollars. That was discussed. I heard that.
Thank you, Counsel Crotto. Colleen, we're going to do a roll call vote on the motion to approve the host community agreement. To you, Colleen.
Counsel Postel.
Yes.
Counsel Carr.
No.
Counsel McCall.
Yes.
Counsel Partier.
Yes.
Counsel Crotto.
Yes.
Counsel Duatt.
No.
Counsel Clary.
Yes.
Counsel Sanders.
Yes.
And Counsel Coy.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lyons and Mr. Bailey and Mr. Ham from Carrick. Motion rescues the parties.
So moved.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much. Very professional presentation as always. You do a very good job. You know the material very well.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Brock.
Next item on the agenda is meet to review matters and file. We have no matters to review at this time. Counsel Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, this isn't our matters to be, I'm just going to make sure that that report will be forwarded to all counselors.
Counsel McCall had made a motion to put that on the website, so I'll also, Colleen, when you get it, make sure you forward that to everybody. Counsel Sanders.
Yeah, I just would also ask the city solicitor to forward that 10 pages from the DEP over to the council as well.
Can you forward that to Colleen also, David, and so she can send out to everybody?
Definitely. We just got that today.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Sometime next week, I have to review it.
We'll get it, we'll get it to you.
Thank you. Motion adjourned, Counsel O'Hara.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?